Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
Oh, no. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Maybe it's the name of the game.
Call him Mr. Stevenson.
Yeah.
I don't know. He's good.
Call Mr. Stevenson. I don't know. Please, gentlemen.
He headed the union, I guess, the West Orange Teachers Union, the guy with the beard, what's his name? So he grew up in town next to me. South Jersey.
I didn't know he was South Jersey.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, it was him or his wife. Kind of, and his wife. It's not like the greatest answer, you know? I had my neighbor out of the margin. Which I need to kind of soften. It's a little, little rough. Yeah, this is why.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting on Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'd like to thank all of you here in person. It's wonderful to have such an amazing crowd here tonight for some of the honorees that we're going to talk about later. And also thank you to everyone who is watching us from home. I would also like to thank my fellow board members, Mr. Moore and Ms. Flowers and our student liaisons. Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Dr. Bryant. Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Ms. Vera. Here. Vice President Ifker.
Here.
President Rock.
Here.
Notice of meeting. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests are discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the act, a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and by email to the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education and posted on the district website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted on local TV and the district's website at a future date. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is ours. One nation, the free, the equal, the free, the equal.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any comments? Hearing done, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson. Ms. Vera.
Yes.
Vice President Ifker.
Yes.
President Rock.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, good evening to our student liaisons, Nina Davis and Abigail Rothstein. Would you please share your student liaison report with us this time?
Good evening. For the first time since two thousand and nineteen, on Saturday, the girls' basketball team was declared the Essex County Champions after, yes. After a very close game with Montclair Immaculate, ending in a score of forty-three to forty-one, so congratulation to our girls' team. It was a very close game. I watched it. It was, it was tough. Additionally, on February thirteenth, the Student Council held its annual Black History Scholars Dinner with performances from the Girls and Boys Step Teams, the Jubilee Choir, Jubilee Pit Band, student poetry, and student solo performances, along with a student art display. Local businesses catered, so thank you to them and thank you for everyone who was in attendance.
In addition, in addition, the Boys and Girls Step Teams, we would like to congratulate them for both placing the top three in the Jersey High School Stepping Regionals. That made the girls' optimal precision, the number one best girls' step team in New Jersey, and absolute the second-best boys' team in New Jersey, so congratulations to all of them. We would also like to congratulate our mock trial team. For the first time in West Orange High School history, the West Orange Mock Trial Team qualified for the Essex County Tournament Finals. They faced up against Newark Academy. Congratulations to everyone involved. That's it.
Thank you for that. Next up, Mr. Moore, it's time for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rock. Good evening, everyone. Oh, thank you. Tonight, I want to take a moment to publicly recognize one of West Orange Mountaineers, one of our West Orange Mountaineers, Senior Sally Nagasi. For those that don't know, our senior Sally achieved a perfect score on the SAT. That's less than one percent of the candidates to achieve this status. Sally, we're very proud of you and we are grateful that you're a student here. Tonight, he will receive a certificate from the Board of Ed, but he also received this, a certificate by Doc, from Dr. Rosie Bogoli, Assemblywoman, Dr. Rosie Bogoli, who wished to recognize Sally this evening. So at this time, I ask Principal Guerrero and School Counselor Anna Delia to please present Sally with his certificates.
Good applause again, one more time. Sally, please come on up. I'd just like to say just a quick word on Sally. I have the distinct honor of recognizing this young man for his extraordinary achievement. Sally is a dedicated and talented scholar who has earned a perfect score on the SAT. He is among the top of his graduating class and has demonstrated a deep passion for engineering with aspirations to one day work at NASA. Beyond the classroom, his perseverance and dedication extend to athletics and the performing arts as well, where he has challenged himself to push past his limits. I didn't realize this until, you know, getting to talk more to Sally in the fall. I've always, I always saw him out on the football field performing with the color guard. I didn't realize that at the same time during the same season, he was also running as a member of our cross-country team. I'm extremely, myself, our staff, our community are extremely proud of this young man, not only for this individual accomplishment, but for the example he has set for all the young people that are coming after him, of what's possible in our school district and our community. Very proud of you, Sally. Thank you.
Can we take a picture with the board, please?
Good evening. Um, thank you for having me here. I'm glad it can be one of our students and athletes, one of your kids, classmates, and friends who's up here holding these certificates today. As I understand it, you guys have me here today because on some level, you believe that I've done something which is impossible but otherwise unreasonable. And by being here, what I've done is said, this is something that we are capable of doing as a school and as a community if we're audacious enough to go for it. So moving forward to the kids and to the parents out there, I think the question we have to ask is, do you want to look like this one day? Is where you would like to be? Because this is an option for you. This is a future that is available to you. And to our parents, our administrators, our teachers, our question is, how can we make this the first of many? That's all.
All right, now we'll take a picture with you. Hey. Tonight's a special night. Along with Sally, tonight we recognize some of our teachers. It is a great, it is, brings me great pleasure to recognize some of our outstanding faculty and staff who have been selected to receive Educator of the Year Awards here in West Orange. All our educators and staff were nominated by their school principal. There's a lot of them here tonight. So I won't waste too much time and I will allow their principals to elaborate on how great they are. Let's start tonight off with our supervisor of Special Services, Ms. Kristin Gogarty Fitzgerald. A little housekeeping. Once there, we are done presenting our teachers and staff members at the podium, we offer our families and their principal or supervisor to go to the back, towards the back, where there's a step and repeat where pictures can be taken. So, once we do our certificate, Kristin, we'll escort your teachers towards the back where pictures will be taken, and now everyone will follow you.
Great, thank you.
Get it right.
Will do.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first thank Mr. Moore and the Board of Education for planning this evening to acknowledge the amazing educators in West Orange. I would like to first begin by congratulating each staff member in the district who is receiving an award this evening, very well deserved. I have the pleasure of giving out the Governor Educator of the Year and Educational Services Professional of the Year Awards for Betty Madalena Early Learning Center. First, the Governor Educator of the Year Award goes to Ms. Lauren Porter, who is a preschool students with disabilities teacher. This is the second time that Ms. Porter has received this wonderful award. She is known for her knowledge in applied behavior analysis and discrete trial instruction. Ms. Porter is also a certified BCBA and uses that advanced knowledge to implement best practices in her classroom in order to foster student achievement. Within the classroom, Ms. Porter is also a leader. She leads by example, is thorough and patient. She demonstrates a strong ability to motivate her students and staff. She instills a love of school and learning. Additionally, Ms. Porter has facilitated training with her classroom power professionals to create a skilled team who collectively and collaboratively work to ensure student learning. This is visible in her whole group activities and individual student learning within her classroom. She frequently shares that the success in her classroom is a tribute to the teamwork and dedication from the power professionals that she works with on a daily basis. She is highly sensitive to her family's current needs and works seamlessly to engage them in their child's development and learning. She possesses excellent interpersonal skills that allow her to create meaningful relationships with students, faculty, and parents. Please help me to congratulate Ms. Lauren Porter. The Educational Services Professional of the Year Award for Betty Madalena Early Learning Center is being given to Ms. Mary Ann DeCosmo, who is a school psychologist on the Child Study Team. Ms. DeCosmo has dedicated herself to the West Orange Public Schools since two thousand and three, where she has worked in various schools across the district and most recently BMELC. Ms. DeCosmo is a true advocate for the students that she case manages. She is extremely conscientious and diligent when performing her daily job responsibilities. Anyone who knows Ms. DeCosmo knows that she leaves no detail unturned. She is extremely comprehensive with her work, whether it be conducting evaluations, writing reports, observing students, or communicating with parents. She ensures that she makes decisions in the best interest of the students. She presents with a calm, even-killed demeanor, works collaboratively with the other members of the Child Study Team, as well as the teachers at BMELC, department administration, and parents and guardians. Earlier this school year, Ms. DeCosmo was dealing with a personal situation and lost a very close loved one. During this time, she continued to show up to ensure that she did not fall behind at work. While she may feel it goes unnoticed, she often stays late and goes the extra mile. I would like to thank Ms. DeCosmo for being a true professional who genuinely cares about the students, and I would like to ask that you help me congratulate her on this well-deserved award. Congrats, Ms. DeCosmo.
Thank you, Kristin. Next, I'd like to call on Director of Preschool, Ms. Kalisha Darlene.
Thank you for having us here today to be able to celebrate our educators. The West Orange Early Childhood Learning Center Educational Service Professional of the Year is Mara Memraud. Mara is the Preschool Intervention and Referral Specialist, also known as our purrs. She is also a certified speech specialist who assists us with all of our locations. She always approaches her work in a proactive fashion, and she has a genuine interest in the West Orange community and all of the students that we serve. She has provided a wealth of knowledge and resources to not only our thirteen locations, but also, thank you, but also the students and families during our intervention meetings. And the teachers, as well as the associated staff in the preschool program appreciate her time and her efforts across the town. And if you know the preschool program, you know we service in multiple towns. So, I would like to thank Mara Memraud for being an integral part of our program and congratulate her on receiving this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I call on Principal Maketa Hewitt of Gregory.
Good evening. Okay, good evening. Thank you to the board and Mr. Moore for taking this time to make this board meeting extra special for all of our teachers who are receiving awards this evening. Congratulations to all of our two thousand and twenty-four Governor Educator of the Year and Educational Service Professional of the Year. Very, very well deserved. First, I'd like to announce Gregory's Educator of the Year, Ms. Danine Robinson. Right over here. Ms. Robinson is a remarkable fourth-grade math and science teacher. She develops lessons that are innovative, fun, specific to each of the learners in her classroom. She intentionally develops learning experiences that push students' thinking to the next level so that they can grasp challenging mathematical concepts in a short period of time. Ms. Robinson is a mathematics leader in the district. She happens to have the highest fourth-grade NJSLA state-level student achievement data in the school district for two years in a row. She teaches mathematics strategies and concepts in a way that allows students to process and understand material that is elaborate and highly complex. She helps students make sense of difficult subject matter that increases their motivation and drive to succeed in math. When Ms. Robinson offers extra support after school to students, they jump at the opportunity not only to learn how to get better at math, but to just hang out with her and have fun. Ms. Robinson works collaboratively with her grade-level and content-oriented colleagues within our school, as well as outside of the school on a regular basis. She's been a member of a variety of district-level PLCs that includes working with district administrations to pilot new programs and write curriculum. In addition to the strong relationships that she's built with her colleagues, Ms. Robinson has long-lasting relationships with her students' families. She makes a concerted effort to maintain open communication with her students' parents to help them understand how to best support their child and children at home with the concepts that they are learning in class. And after all is said and done, Ms. Robinson still finds time after school and on the weekends to attend musical performances and sports events. I feel honored to have her on my team, and I wish you a very special congratulations, Ms. Robinson. All right, second, I have the pleasure of announcing Gregory's educational, I don't feel like I'm going to mess this up, Educational Service Professional of the Year, Mrs. Kelly Carcello. When she comes. Mrs. Carcello is a highly respected educator and member of our faculty. After several years of being a special education teacher, Mrs. Carcello became a learning disabilities teaching consultant on our Child Study Team. In this role, she demonstrates great leadership and responsibility. She meticulously manages each of her cases as she works tirelessly to gather all available information on each of her children. Mrs. Carcello works collaboratively with the other members of the Child Study Team to discuss alternative accommodations that will best support her students' individualized learning and behavioral needs. She also develops strong relationships with her students' teachers so that she can work with them hand-in-hand on helping them learn how to help their students master all of their goals and objectives. Mrs. Carcello ensures that she's up to speed with all of her students' work habits, behaviors as she conducts classroom observations in various instructional settings over the course of each term. During these observations, she specifically looks at their level of engagement and ability to effectively participate in a variety of lessons. After gathering all of this information, she meets with her students' teachers to discuss the information she's collected, and then they work as a team to develop new plans of actions to support her students. Mrs. Carcello is highly motivated and extraordinarily conscientious. Conscientious. She works in tandem with the school and district administration to ensure that every one of her students on her caseload has the opportunity to thrive in their learning environment. She seeks support from others when applicable and remains open to all feedback. She volunteers for school events and at times helps recruit other staff members for them. Mrs. Carcello is a valued member of our leadership team at Gregory School. Her presence is strong and she is highly respected by all. It is a great honor and privilege to have Mrs. Carcello on the Gregory team, and I am honored to present this award to you, Kelly.
Thank you. Next, I call on Hazel's Principal, Mr. Joel Castillo.
Let's give all the honorees another round of applause. So, big congratulations to Ms. Hassan and Ms. Varanelli. Ms. Hassan is Hazel's Educational Service Professional of the Year, and Ms. Varanelli is our Governor's Educator of the Year. Ms. Varanelli is a third-grade teacher at Hazel Elementary School, and Ms. Hassan is one of our paraprofessionals in the school, so let's give them both a big round of applause. Together, these two outstanding professionals have dedicated over thirty-two years of service to our Hazel community. That's an amazing accomplishment. Ms. Varanelli's unwavering commitment to our students is evident in her daily dedication consistently going above and beyond to foster academic success and personal growth for our students. As a proud graduate of the West Orange Public Schools, her deep-rooted connection to our community shines through in everything she does. Let's give, again, Ms. Varanelli a big round of applause as Hazel's Educator. Courting, guidance, and steadfast support to our students. Her ability to create a caring and inclusive learning environment makes a lasting impact on every child she works with. Both of these remarkable educators play a vital role in enhancing the educational journey of our Hazel Eagles, and we are incredibly grateful for their passion, dedication, and service. So let's give Ms. Sabina Hassan a round of applause as Hazel's Educational Service Professional of the Year. So again, thank you to you both. Thank you, Ms. Hassan. Thank you, Ms. Varanelli, for this well-deserved recognition that you've not only bestowed on Hazel for your thirty-two years of commitment, but for every student that has come through your doors. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. At this time, I call Kelly's Principal, Mr. David Marion, to the podium.
Hello and good evening, everyone. Um, it is with great enthusiasm that I recognize Mary Kieros as Kelly Elementary School's Educator of the Year. Mary's dedication to her students' families and the staff at Kelly Elementary School in her role as the ESL teacher is truly remarkable. While she has a quiet demeanor, Mary's actions speak volumes. She consistently goes above and beyond, working tirelessly to meet each child's unique needs. This includes translating for families, pursuing continuing education, actively participating in professional learning communities, and even presenting professional development sessions on the state level. A longtime employee of the West Orange Public Schools, Mary's energy and commitment never waver. Mary collaborates closely with classroom teachers, academic intervention teachers, and reading specialists to support struggling readers. She expertly blends multisensory learning strategies with social-emotional learning, empowering students to achieve success beyond expectations. Mary is passionate about identifying the root causes of learning challenges, distinguishing between language barriers and learning disabilities. This dedication ensures that her students receive the appropriate support to thrive academically and emotionally. She generously shares her expertise with colleagues who often seek her guidance. Mary has naturally grown into a leadership role, mentoring new teachers and guiding them in implementing effective literacy strategies. Mary's impact extends beyond the classroom. She builds strong relationships with families and serves as a valuable resource for the entire Kelly Elementary School community, as evidenced through the multiple parent programs that she has spearheaded. Her calm demeanor, selflessness, and commitment to stay current with educational trends make her an exceptional educator. Mary's passion for her students, their families, her colleagues, and the school community is truly inspiring. She embodies the qualities of an outstanding educator, and her contributions to Kelly Elementary School and the West Orange School District make her a deserving candidate for the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Congratulations, Mary. A long trip from the back. Okay, it's also with great enthusiasm that I recognize Colleen Haran for Kelly Elementary School's Educational Service Professional of the Year Award. Colleen is an exceptional speech therapist at Kelly who consistently goes above and beyond to support our students. who consistently goes above and beyond to support our students, particularly those with special needs. Colleen is a true champion for inclusion and equity. Recognizing the importance of communication for all students, she spearheaded the initiative to install an augmentative and alternative communication board on our playground. Partnering with the West Orange Special Education Parent Association, Colleen actively sought funding and oversaw the installation of this valuable tool. The AAC board has had a transformative effect on our school, fostering greater social interaction among students of all abilities during recess. We have observed students who previously played in isolation now engaging with their peers using the AAC board to express themselves and join in games. Colleen's commitment to AAC extends beyond the playground. She is instrumental in evaluating and working with students who require AAC devices, empowering them to communicate more effectively and independently. Thanks to Colleen's expertise and dedication, students are now able to express their needs, participate more fully in classroom activities, and experience a greater sense of belonging. Colleen's passion for her work, her innovative spirit, and her unwavering commitment to inclusivity make her an invaluable asset to Kelly Elementary School. She embodies the qualities of an outstanding educational service professional and is truly deserving of this recognition. Colleen Haran.
Thank you. Join them. I can't follow that. Next, Mount Pleasant Elementary, Principal Mark Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Moore for inviting us this evening and congratulations to all the nominees. It is my great pleasure to present to you the nominees for Mount Pleasant Educator of the Year and Educational Services Professional of the Year. This year's nominee for Educator of the Year at Mount Pleasant is Mrs. Erin DiFrancesco. Erin started her career as a paraprofessional at Edison Middle School in 2000, where she later became a teacher at Mount Pleasant Elementary in a special education setting, where she has spent the majority of her 25 years in education. She also spent time at Hazel and it must run in her family because her father was a PE teacher here in West Orange for 35 years. So, we're very lucky to have the bloodline continue here at Mount Pleasant. Erin is an amazing educator, obviously. When we had our committee to nominate our teaching staff, Erin's name appeared on everyone's ballot and rightfully so. It made my job easy because Erin was the first person I thought of for this award this year. Erin has the ability to move students academically, socially, and emotionally. In the last two years, she's been teaching fifth-grade resource room and a lot of her students need a push in many different ways, academically, like I said, socially and emotionally. And Erin is that person. It takes a special breed to make the change and make just, you know, the improvements in a student's life that Erin does and the school, myself, the community are very lucky to have Erin on our team. Oftentimes, when I'm walking through the hallways by her classroom, you'll see her colleagues in her room with her planning lessons, talking about students, her reading glasses half down over her nose at the screen and, you know, inside her lesson plans. And Erin, it's my pleasure to award you with this certificate. Congratulations. Next up is Mrs. Paula Correa. Paula is a paraprofessional at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. She started at St. Cloud back in 2007 as a lunch aide. In her past close to 20 years in West Orange, she's worked at Gregory, Mount Pleasant, Kelly, Redwood, St. Cloud, and here you are. So a lot of people in this room know Paula. Paula is the first person I see when I walk into Mount Pleasant and she's oftentimes the last person I see when I leave. Paula also works in our before-care program and after-care program. Paula is a paraprofessional in a neurodivergent classroom as a one-to-one aide this year. However, Paula's work goes far beyond that. All of our students at Mount Pleasant know Ms. Paula. The way that she interacts with students, is supportive of students. Paula is a team player. As any administrator will tell you, that paraprofessionals are such an essential piece of the school day. And oftentimes, when a paraprofessional is not in school, you feel it. And that goes the same with Paula. I'm extremely lucky to have Paula on our staff. Anything that I ask, if I need a favor or help in another classroom because we're short, Paula is the first one there to help out. And that means a tremendous amount to me and I'm so glad that I have the opportunity to recognize that, Paula, because we're an extremely lucky school community because of all of your efforts. You're an example to all of our staff and colleagues on what a constab professional is. And it's my honor to present this certificate to you as Educational Service Professional of the Year for Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Lower that, Mark.
You got it.
Thank you. Gives me great pleasure to introduce Redwood's principal, and I lowered the mic for you. Kimia Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. It is truly an honor to stand before you today to celebrate a dedicated individual who has touched the lives of countless students, parents, and colleagues at Redwood School. Tonight, I am here to recognize Special Education Teacher Eileen McQuillan, who has been nominated by the Redwood community for the prestigious Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Ms. McQuillan has dedicated over two decades of her life to the education of students, particularly those in special education. It is, it takes an exceptional person to teach with such empathy, kindness, and unwavering commitment. She has an innate ability to connect with her students, meeting them exactly where they are and nurturing their growth, not just academically, but emotionally and socially. She understands that every student is unique and works tirelessly to create a safe and supportive space for them to learn, grow, and thrive. But what truly makes Ms. McQuillan stand apart from everyone else is her constant pursuit of new ways to engage her students, whether it's through real-world activities like sorting newsletters for the whole class, for the whole school, or reading poetry in the office on Fridays to receive a smelly sticker. She ensures that every lesson is not just a learning experience, but a memorable one. But it's not just in the classroom that Ms. McQuillan makes an impact. She's a beacon of positivity in the hallways. She has a comedic way about her. She can be our resident photographer. And she's also a source of encouragement for everyone she encounters. Her warm smile, her infectious laughter, and her optimistic energy brighten up the school, making it a more welcoming place for students and staff alike. Ms. McQuillan, you are true, truly, truly, an inspiration to us all. So on behalf of your colleagues, your students, and the entire school and district, I would like to extend this congratulations to you. Next, we have Mr. Mark Manitti. It is an honor to stand here and celebrate you as our Redwood Educational Service Professional nominee for this year's Governor's Education of the Year Award. In every school, there are those individuals who go above and beyond to make a difference every single day. Mr. Mark Manitti, one of our parents and colleagues, is one of those individuals. He has been a constant, steady presence at Redwood School, supporting our students and staff with such dedication and grace. As an ERi professional, Mr. Manitti is able to connect with every child, offering them the guidance and encouragement they need to succeed. One of the most remarkable qualities about Mr. Manitti is his calm and approachable manner, similar to that of Mr. Rogers, if you know Mr. Rogers' neighborhood. No matter how busy the day gets or what challenges arise, he is always steady, always there with a kind word or a helpful hand. His positive attitude and unwavering support make him an invaluable asset to our school. He is an incredible, he has an incredible ability to adapt to any situation and work seamlessly with teachers, students, and other staff members. He truly embodies what it means to be a team player. Mr. Manitti, you remind us all of what it means to show up with a heart full of patience and unwavering commitment to doing the very best for all of the students we serve. For that, we congratulate you and we are grateful to work with you every day. Thank you so much. At Redwood, we have, we have this tradition that everyone who is nominated, they receive the golden apple. Mr. Manitti was so proud that he brought his golden apple with him.
Thank you. Next, we call on St. Cloud's principal, Mr. Eric Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, thank you, Board of Ed members. This is an awesome night. This is such a, you know, we have so much to be proud of in West Orange and, you know, the heart and soul of this district, you know, is in every classroom. So thank you for the opportunity to recognize really amazing educators. This evening, I'm so proud to be able to stand today and celebrate an individual who has exemplified what it means to be a dedicated and compassionate educator and that's Jen, Jennifer Marchese, who is our St. Cloud Teacher of the Year. Jen's journey as an educator spans an incredible 30 years. She began her career in kindergarten and first grade where she nurtured young minds and laid the foundation for future learning. She then spent 20 years in special education, supporting students across all grade levels. And in every role she's taken on, Jen has made an extraordinary impact, not just on her students, but on all of us who have been, had the privilege to work alongside of her. Jen is the kind of teacher who makes you believe in the power of kindness, intelligence, and positivity. She approaches every challenge with a problem-solving mindset and does so with grace and dedication. Whether it's finding the best way to connect with a student or collaborating with their in-class support colleagues to create the best possible learning environment. Jen's ability to adapt and respond to every situation is something we all admire. Her heart for her students is unmatched. She's the teacher who sees the potential in every child and works tirelessly to help them succeed, no matter the obstacles. She's the teacher who listens and supports and encourages and challenges her students, making sure that each of them knows they are seen and valued and capable of greatness. Jen, we thank you for everything you do. Your kindness, brilliance, and commitment to problem-solving are just a few of the many reasons you've been chosen as the Teacher of the Year. She also had a husband, Mr. Greg Marchese, stand up, who served over 30 years. Coach, great teacher, who also shared Teacher of the Year support. So it's a family tradition in the Marcheses. So we thank you, Jen. You inspire everyone around you to be better and for that, we are incredibly grateful. Please join us in congratulating Jennifer Marchese, our St. Cloud Teacher of the Year. Now to celebrate our Educational Service Professional of the Year. We are here to celebrate the remarkable contributions of someone who has dedicated 21 years to shaping the lives of young students and supporting their emotional well-being. Today, we are proud to recognize Sarah McIntosh, our school counselor, as our Educational Service Professional of the Year. Sarah's work as an elementary school guidance counselor, and I should say counselor, I'm sorry, yes. She's, she's, she's my right-hand person. She is just, she's awesome and it just, it helps me grow every day in considering these things. So she's our counselor, has been nothing short of extraordinary. For over two decades, she has been the steady hand guiding countless students through their challenges and their triumphs. Her passion for helping others is reflected in every interaction she has, whether it's comforting word to a child who is struggling or an insightful piece of advice to a parent seeking guidance. She has helped students develop resilience, confidence, and the skills needed to face the world with a positive mindset for their employability, for their ability to succeed outside. As many of you know, there are no typical days in her role, yet Sarah approaches each new challenge with grace and a smile, always doing whatever it takes to meet the needs of the students while conducting a myriad of activities from Intervention and Referral Services 504s, Preparation for the NJSLA, HIBs, Lunch Buddies for lunches, groups. Sarah's leadership and professional insights have been recognized by her peers and honored by the district leadership as she now serves as one of the elementary school coordinators for the Elementary Counseling Program. So on behalf of the entire school community at St. Cloud, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to you, Sarah, as our Educational Support Staff Member of the Year. We are lucky to have you as part of our family and we look forward to many more years of your guidance and support and inspiration. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Oh, next, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the Washington School principal, Ms. Marie DeMayo. Should've said something to Eric, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Moore, Ms. Flowers, and the Student Liaison. The Educator of the Year at Washington School is Caitlin Carlson, our art teacher. During her 12 years of service at Washington School, Caitlin Carlson has represented everything that is good about education. She demonstrates a true dedication and interest in her students, colleagues, parents, and community. She is an instructional leader and an outstanding role model for her colleagues. She is passionate and trustworthy with a clear vision of wanting success for all her students. She also teaches the preschool students since they have been at Washington School. Mrs. Carlson has created a rainbow of color and design that makes Washington School her magnificent world of art. I want to thank Caitlin Carlson for the wonderful leadership as the Teacher of the Year and for everything she contributes to our Washington family. The Educator of the Year at, oh, excuse me. The Educational Services Professional of the Year at Washington School is Brandy Brennan. She is our academic support teacher. During her nine years of service at Washington School, Brandy Brennan has become a true leader. She is the lead teacher of the morning academic program, the Homework Club, and the Student Council. She is a skilled professional who inspires her students to She is a skilled professional who inspires her students to achieve academically. She collaborates always with students, colleagues, families, and community to create a culture of respect and success. Ms. Brennan truly cares about all the students at Washington School. She always goes above and beyond the parameters of her position. Brandy is an outstanding educator and a great role model for everyone. I want to thank Brandy Brennan for her wonderful leadership as the Educational Services Professional of the Year and for everything she contributes to our Washington family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we call on Edison's Principal, Mr. Steve Melendez. I believe his assistant principal is joining him, Dr. Carrie Orange Jones, a recent author.
Thank you, Mr. Moore and the board, for allowing us this great opportunity to honor our outstanding educators here in West Orange. Tonight, myself and Dr. Orange Jones, as you have said, the newest author to our district, so please let's give her a round of applause. The two of us will honor our governor, teacher, our Governor's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Shanice Jackson, and our Educational Service Professional of the Year, Ms. Jenica Bowell. So tonight is my privilege to stand here honoring one of the many teachers in West Orange who are dedicated to their students and community. Edison Central 6 Middle School is fortunate to have a teacher like Ms. Shanice Jackson, who embodies what it means to be an educator. Ms. Jackson is a master at her craft, holding herself to the highest standards. The environment Ms. Jackson creates for her students is second to none. If you were to walk into her classroom, you would quickly see an organized environment where students are thriving academically and socially. The students in Ms. Jackson's class take pride in their work because they are being taught by a teacher who takes pride in her work. Over the years, I've witnessed firsthand her ability to inspire students to reach their full potential. Students in her class are seen as individuals who are encouraged to think critically and explore various perspectives. Her passion shines through every lesson, helping students to learn beyond their curriculum. I thoroughly enjoy sitting in Ms. Jackson's classroom, and I remember many times sitting there thinking, I wanted Ms. Jackson to teach my own children. Edison Central 6 Middle School and the township of West Orange are fortunate to have an individual who understands the role a teacher plays in the lives of her students. Our students are very fortunate to have an educator like Ms. Jackson. And I look forward to continuing to work with her as we continue to impact the students who enter Edison Central Middle School. So let's please give a round of applause for Ms. Jackson.
Gave my flowers early. Good evening, Superintendent Moore, our esteemed board members, faculty, and staff in the entire West Orange community. I am Dr. Carrie Orange Jones, the Assistant Principal of Thomas Edison Central 6 Middle School. First of all, I'd love to congratulate all the awardees this evening on such a momentous occasion. You all deserve the accolades. As a recent addition to the administration, I'm going into my third year, I understand the importance of having faculty and paraprofessionals. They are the fabric of what we do. And so it is my honor to celebrate a truly exceptional individual, Ms. Jenica Bowell, who has been awarded the Educational Services Professional of the Year for Thomas Edison Central 6 Middle School. This is a testament to Jenica's unwavering dedication, incredible skills, and positive impact on our students. Jenica inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn. She actively collaborates with colleagues and students to nurture a strong culture of respect and success. She has the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues alike, and it's easy to see why. Her passion for helping students succeed is evident in everything that she does. She goes above and beyond to ensure that every student feels supported, encouraged, and empowered to reach their full potential. We are incredibly fortunate to have Jenica Bowell as part of our Edison Central 6 team. Her hard work, dedication, and positive attitude make a real difference in the lives of our students, and we are grateful for her contributions to our school community. So again, congratulations, Jenica, on being the Educational Services Professional of the Year for Thomas Edison, pardon me, Thomas Edison Central 6 Middle School. It is much deserved, and I'm so honored to work with you every day.
Thank you. Next, we call on Principal Xavier Fitzgerald of Liberty Middle School, and I believe his assistant principal, Mr. Steve Oshowski, will be joining him at the podium.
First, I'd like to thank and thank the Board of Education for presenting a night like this, and also to all the awardees. It is a, a, an award well-deserved. Tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with my Educational Service Professional Award. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment to recognize someone, in my opinion, is often unsung hero of our schools. This role, this person, is arguably the more important than the building administrator. Yeah, I said it. School nurses are the people you don't always think about, until you need them. And in the past several years, thanks to a pandemic and ever-growing list of ailments, demands of the job have become more challenging and more essential and more exhausting, which brings me to the reason we are here tonight. On behalf of the faculty and staff of Liberty Middle School, I am honored to recognize Ms. Rose Tan. Ms. Tan began her journey as a school nurse in West Orange back in September 2006. And over the last 19 years at Liberty Middle School, she has built a reputation that will undoubtedly stand the test of time. She is known for her meticulous organization, her vast comprehensive knowledge of all things school nursing, and perhaps most impressively, her ability to remain, remain calm, cool, and collected in the face of absolute chaos. Because let's be honest, that's what middle schools are today. Now the person, now my personal story with Ms. Tan is short, but I think rather sweet. When I first was asked to come to open up Liberty Middle School in 2022, the former director of Special Services asked me how things were going, is that settled in? Most people don't know this, but school nurses actually report to the Director of Special Services. Back when COVID was at its peak, it would often, I would often hear the intense discussions about how to safely return to school. So when I finally met Ms. Tan, I was able to put a face to the name I had heard so much about. And let me tell you, my first thought was, does this lady ever smile? I mean, people say I don't smile, but wow, she beat, she had me beat. I remember turning to Mr. Oshowski, VP, and asking, are you sure she even likes it here? But then one day after receiving a yet another two-word response from Ms. Tan, I decided to set a personal goal. While I'm here, I'm going to make you smile every single day. Now, I can't say I fully accomplished this mission, but I can say over the past two years, Ms. Tan has definitely made me smile and laugh more times than I can, than I can count. So tonight is my absolute honor to present Ms. Rose Tan with the Educational Service Professional Award for the school year 2425. Ms. Tan, your dedication, your knowledge, your quiet strength, and yes, your occasional smiles have left a lasting impact on Liberty Middle School. We are incredibly grateful for all that you have done, and while we miss you dearly, but she is retired, we wish you nothing but happiness and success in your well-earned retirement. And who knows, maybe one day you'll finally have time to work on smiling more than me. Congratulations, Ms. Tan. Our second honorary, and I'm going to ask the board to give me some leeway with this one because I'm going to need to call two other people up to the mic. If you hear my voice crack tonight as well, it's going to be what it's going to be. That's all I can say. Um, I'm going to first ask Ms. Sarah Bogarty to come up to the podium, and I'm going to ask Ms. Alexa Guzman to help me with this presentation. The Educator of the Year awards are given to those who embody dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment to, to their students. These individuals are the first to arrive and the last to leave, the ones whom students naturally gravitate towards. The colleagues others seek for guidance and teachers whom parents hear about in stories of kindness, encouragement, and inspiration. To me, as an educator, it is more than just a teacher. An educator is someone who selflessly makes, who makes sacrifices for the betterment of others and who moves through the day with purpose, ensuring that each child feels valued, supported, and seen. They are the heart of the school, spark in a child's confidence, and the reason why so many students believe in themselves. On the morning of September 24th at 7:09 a.m., I received a text message from Ms. Hack that read, "The headache is still bad. Going to stay home." A simple text, yet a moment that would soon become profoundly significant. Just weeks later, on October 7th, the Liberty Middle School community suffered a devastating loss. We lost more than a teacher that day. We lost a mentor, role model, and a deeply passionate educator, whose presence left an unforgettable mark on everyone who encountered her. To be honest, I did not have the privilege of knowing Tisha as well as I wish I had. Our interactions were brief, but meaningful. We sat together to discuss ideas of academic support. And this past spring, we worked side by side on an interview committee to hire a new seventh-grade ELA teacher. Even with limited time together, one thing was abundantly clear. Her spirit was kind, her dedication was unwavering, and her passion for literacy and education was boundless. She was the kind of educator who did more than just teach. She nurtured, she inspired, and she uplifted others around her. On October 7th, Liberty Middle School lost a beloved teacher. But in that loss, we also gained something immeasurable, a guardian angel. Tisha's legacy, compassion, and commitment will live on in the students she taught, the colleagues she supported, and the lives she touched. Tonight is my deepest honor and privilege to present the Educator of the Year Award to Brian, Jonah, and River Hack. This award... This is, this award is not only recognition of Tisha's years of service and commitment and passion, but is also a testament to the profound impact, impact that she had on children of West Orange and every student fortunate enough to have crossed their path. Her light will never fade. Her influence will continue to shape the young minds of generations to come. I want to thank the Hack family for sharing Tisha with us. Thank you.
Thank you to the Hack family, and thank you to Principal Fitzgerald for sharing a moment with the rest of us. I know it's been hard on your staff as well. It's tough for us to lose someone in our school community. We work with each other for long periods of time, and if you work with someone for a long period of time, you understand why it gets so personal when we lose each other. But, um, West Orange, you're a beautiful community. Uh, you're a beautiful community of teachers. And, uh, just like this town, you understand the importance of unity and what it means to accomplish things and, to accomplish things and work together. And our goal is to uplift the kids in this community, but we make friendships and family along the way. So thank you to Liberty for sharing. We're going to move forward. I'm going to ask that, uh, the Principal of Roosevelt, Mr. Lionel Hush, join us at the podium.
Don't look back there, folks.
Don't look back.
Look at Lionel.
It's my distinct honor to present our Governor's Educator of the Year, Ms. Leanna Amren. Leanna Amren has been an integral part of Roosevelt Middle School and the surrounding West Orange community for the past 22 years. Firm but fair, Leanna has a unique ability to engage and inspire students at all levels. She fosters an inclusive and dynamic classroom environment where students feel comfortable exploring while providing a rigorous setting that enables her students to excel academically and personally. She truly believes in educating the whole child as she is consistently sought out by students year in and year out for guidance and direction through the challenges life brings them. Her continued dedication to the students of Roosevelt is also evident in the multiple extracurricular clubs and events she runs. She has enriched the school community's knowledge, understanding, and acceptance of multiple religions, traditions, and celebrations through her time as advisor to the Culture Club. She has broadened the in-the-field science exposure of our children as advisor of the Explorers Club. And she has empowered the students in their memorization of their school experience as the yearbook advisor. In addition to all of those commitments, Leanna Amren heads an after-school tutorial for our ML population while teaching English to non-English speaking parents of the West Orange community at night. Believing in and caring for the West Orange community as a whole, she has also taught Spanish classes to West Orange teachers interested in better serving our rising Spanish-speaking population. Fluent in five languages, Leanna Amren has served as an invaluable asset to the West Orange community. Students can always tell when teachers really care about them. And so many seek out Leanna due to her genuine concern and care. They come to her for emotional support and advice and continue to do so well after they graduate. In fact, a month ago, she attended a wedding of a former Roosevelt student in Houston, Texas. This is not only a testimony to what she means to the children of this community, but also a testimony to what our students mean to her. The amount of connection she has made over the years and the love and respect the students have for her attests to her ability to reach our students and make a difference in their lives. A mentor, a leader, a teacher, a counselor, and a role model. Leanna Amren embodies all we want and seek in our educators. Shy of the spotlight, but most deserving of it, I present our Governor's Educator of the Year, Ms. Leanna Amren.
Thank you. I now call to the mic, High School Principal, Mr. Oscar Guerrero.
I'm going to go ahead and raise the mic.
Go ahead and raise the mic, Superintendent Moore. Good evening, everyone. Again, once again, members of the board, Superintendent Moore. Tonight is my great privilege to introduce you, our Teacher of the Year at West Orange High School, an educator whose passion, dedication, and commitment to excellence has made a lasting impact on our students and our school community. Ms. Cindy Sully is an outstanding architectural design teacher and the coordinator for the Tech and Engineering Department at West Orange High School. Through her innovative teaching methods, she has created a learning environment that sparks creativity, fosters critical thinking, and inspires students to pursue careers in engineering and design. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Sully has been a driving force in expanding opportunities for our students. As the advisor of our National Society of Black Engineers chapter, she has worked tirelessly to connect students with prestigious engineering programs and professionals in the field. Her mentorship and dedication has empowered our students to dream big and achieve their goals. We are incredibly, excuse me, we are incredibly proud to honor here tonight our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Cindy Sully. Last but certainly not least, I'd like to now recognize an outstanding educator whose dedication and vision have transformed the lives of so many students here at West Orange. Our Educational Services Professional of the Year is Ms. Jody Goldstein. She has spent the past seventeen years at West Orange High School building one of the most successful eighteen-to-twenty-one transition programs in the area. Through her expertise and deep connections in adult services, Ms. Goldstein has created meaningful real-world, real-world opportunities for our students with special abilities, ensuring that they leave West Orange High School prepared. Program success is so widely recognized that we, with her in commitment to her students, have made a profound, excuse me, profound impact on our school and community. We are incredibly grateful for her work and proud to celebrate her tonight. Congratulations, Ms. Goldstein.
Thank you.
I just wanna take two minutes to say congratulations to all the nominees. This is an example of some of the dedicated folks that work with our kids every day. I'm lucky to also have students myself, so I get the benefit of this incredible staff as well. So, congratulations to all the nominees. Ryan, before we move on, do you wanna, can we take a minute or?
Sure. Let me just say something to the honorees first.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, so congratulations to everyone that was honored tonight as one of the Governor's Educators of the Year. Uh, not everyone who's in the profession realizes this, but this is the first step towards being the National Teacher of the Year. Uh, it's part of a nationwide program where we choose our local district educators of the year. Someone from our district may end up being the county teacher of the year. It was just a couple of years ago that Ms. Dunleavy was our Essex County Teacher of the Year. And then from those county teachers of the year, someone's gonna be selected to be the state teacher of the year for New Jersey. When I started teaching many years ago in East Orange, I was lucky enough to be next to a woman, Ms. Teresa Mann, who was a great teacher and mentor, and years later, she was honored to be the state teacher of the year. And it's wonderful to see someone that we work with every day go to that level, and hopefully someone that's here today can do that as well. So, congratulations for being the West Orange Educator of the Year in your building. But I hope one of you will represent us at either the county, state, or national level after this. Uh, we will, at this point, take about a five-minute recess, so if you're gonna hang out and take pictures, do that. Uh, if you'd like the remainder of the business portion of the meeting, we'll be back in session at just about eight o'clock.
What am I adding?
Then the board will take over their meeting. Since our last board meeting, we've had eight HIB investigations throughout the district. I reviewed and summarized each, and it was determined by this administration and bullying court counselors and specialists that all eight were unfounded. I concur with this finding, and, uh, that will conclude my report.
All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Moore. Before my president, or actually, I guess we have board committee reports first. Have any on the board have anything they need to share? No? Stevenson, you thinking? Did you have something, Mr. Iver?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, three brief comments, if I can. The first is that, uh, several people have, uh, mentioned to me that they got the news that their taxes are going up, and what are we gonna do about the school board budget? We don't vote for the budget until June. But I can tell you that the process has already started, and this is my third year on the board. And this is by far, uh, the best budget process I've been a part of. Everyone's taking it very seriously. We understand the pressures that are on the taxpayers. Mr. Moore is really, uh, leading the way in terms of how we approach this. So, I am cautiously optimistic that we're gonna get to a place that is as good as we can get to. The second thing is, uh, I was gonna mention this to President Rock. Maybe in the near future, we could invite, um, the head of, uh, transportation to one of our meetings. There's been, there've been a few things on the news about bus companies using artificial intelligence to improve safety for the, uh, school buses. I think that's something I'd like to find out a little more about. When I see, when I drive around and I see the school buses, when the red stop sign, before it even goes back to the bus, people are moving, if they've stopped at all. And it's just a tragedy waiting to happen, and if we can be a little proactive, maybe we're doing it already. I don't know about it, but I'd like to hear about that. And then the last thing was that, uh, Ms. Vera and I went, we were on our little tour of all the schools, and we got up to West Orange High School. We met with Mr. Guerrero. It was a wonderful, uh, brief visit. Two, uh, programs in particular that I wanted to mention was Mr. Andrew Mazarek in graphic design. It was very interesting to see what these creative students and their, uh, teacher are doing. And Mr. Rudy Petrella, the automotive technology teacher, that was eye-opening to me. Uh, the, the program that he offers to students. He, he let us know that, uh, he's in need of a new lift. I don't think we were gonna have that in the budget, but, uh, it, it might be something that we could work on in terms of a fundraiser, but it was just a very impressive, uh, class, and I commend him on the work that he's doing with these children. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Iver. And I'll ask Mr. Moore to look into that bus safety issue. Uh, anything from Mr. Iver?
The only thing is, uh, you know, to reinforce that the program that is running about, um, automotive and, um, body shop is amazing. The kind of work the student, basically, we didn't have a chance to see it, but the way that the teacher was expressing himself about the number of students who are taking part of that, you know, is basically what we really needed. You know, I'm sorry to say this, but, you know, sometimes we talk about, uh, the taxes increase and all of that, but, you know, it's nothing else we can do with the situation that we are living right now is, you know, we really have to invest, and this is the best investment that we can have. Have programs like that that prepare the students to get them, you know, get, once they graduate, leave the high school with a certification that they can, you know, uh, be part of their real life. And as the Vice President Iver mentioned, you know, it was really amazing. We're really surprised about it. I didn't even realize that it was a hundred and twen- a hundred and twenty students served, taking classes in the, the special class, the automotive. So, but, you know, it's, uh, maybe we can take in the future to, you know, and they sell empanadas. This is what he was saying, the empanadas, in order to raise some money to buy the stuff that they really needed in class.
Thank you, Ms. Vera.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Stevenson?
President Rock, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. I wanted to first acknowledge that it is February, and February is Black History Month, and want to thank those schools, those educators, and those families, and the PTAs who have put together Black History Month programs in our schools. Uh, Black History Month is still an important month. Black History Month is still an important month. Black history is still an important matter, just not for black children, but for all children so that we learn and share and grow as a community. So, so thank you for the work around Black History Month. Also want to just acknowledge the young man, Salie, again, on his accomplishment, a perfect score on the S A T. And I think his words tonight are certainly indicative of the caliber of young man that he is. And I think his words certainly are a signaling device to all other students about what is achievable. And more so to the students is also a, as we celebrated educators tonight, a signaling device to any educator, just not educators in West Orange, that there are no limits to what our individual students can achieve as individuals and what we as a community can achieve. So I appreciated his words to say, look at me. And he did not say it with any arrogance. He said it in great humility to say that I am an example of what can be. So I salute that young man and wish him well in his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. And I would honor or echo those sentiments about Sally. Congratulations again to him. In my president's report, I'd like to share a little bit about Redwood Elementary School and some of the things that they've been doing. Go Rockets. They've had a very busy February, planning celebrating Black History Month. And I'm happy to highlight a few examples of what is on their schedule, just a few, even though this paragraph is very lengthy. Redwood students recently completed their annual service project of kindness kits for those in need. Approximately 500 bags were filled with snacks, toiletries, hats, gloves, scarves, and words of inspiration written by arcade five students. The effort begins during the month of January in honor of Dr. King. Students come together to assemble the kindness kits on Valentine's Day, and the kits are distributed on President's Day to the food pantry in West Orange, Tony's Kitchen, Winterfell Group Home, and the Help Center. Redwood's Fourth Annual Black History Art Walk takes place this week when the works of American artist, author and songwriter, Ramare Bearden are celebrated, and a live performer will engage our students and staff with the art of African drumming. We also had a number of students participate in the Essex County Education Association's Pride Contest, their essay contest, and Place with awards. So we had in kindergarten, one of Marion Cargo Jackson's students took first place in the essay contest. And then in first grade, one of Ms. Heck's students took second place. And in second grade, one of Ms. Burnett's students also took second place. So congratulations to all those students. Go Rockets. And since we did touch on the budget, don't have a lot of news on that front, but just want to kind of share some procedural issues of what's going on. So we have had preliminary meetings to review the budget and where things stand. Tomorrow is the governor's budget address, I believe. Is that correct? Yep. And that is always a moment of a fateful moment for us, right? Finding out what will happen. He will make an announcement as to what happens statewide to K twelve aid. And then on Thursday, typically forty eight hours after that, we'll find out how much aid we are or are not going to get. And that will have a big impact on what our ultimate budget will look like. So can't say much about what the budget will look like today, but by the end of the week, we'll have a, a better indication of where things are going. So you may want to tune in tomorrow when the governor gives that budget address. And that is it for me. Next up, we will have questions from the public on agenda items only. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask? Oh, I was also going to say, I see Coach Jackson in the audience. We talked about some of our sports teams, and I think some of our students punched their ticket to the media champions. So maybe when he comes to the mic, he can tell us about them. Now we'll get to public comment. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and home address for the record and then begin your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any members of the public here in the audience tonight who wish to make a public comment? Yes, we'll come back to non agenda items after the resolutions. Thank you. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our resolutions. First, may I have a motion to approve the personnel items, A one through A six? Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Want to congratulate the following retirees. We have Christina DeMarco, a paraprofessional at West Orange High School for her seventeen years of service. Irene Fiori, a kindergarten teacher at Redwood Elementary for her twenty three years of service. No go Rockets. Sue Culca? Slipping over there. Okay. Sue Culca, a mathematics teacher at Liberty Middle School for her twenty eight years of service. Kathleen Lazlo, a fourth grade teacher at Redwood Elementary for her twenty five years of service. Lisa Pacini Asman, a health and phys ed teacher at Gregory Elementary for her thirty six years of service. And last but not least, Raquel Sardina, a paraprofessional here at West Orange High School for her twenty five years of service. Thank you all for your service to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education, and welcome to the club where every day is Saturday.
So, so now President Rock can feel allowed me the privilege. I was going to say go Rockets, but actually had a quick twenty second speech to make. Just wanted to acknowledge those teachers at Redwood who are retiring, both of whom have taught my sons. It's important always to acknowledge as we do the retirees, but I just want to take the personal privilege to thank Ms. Fiori and Ms. Lazlo, great teachers at Redwood. Congratulate them on their retirement and all that they do for our children, particularly my children. Thank you.
I'll echo, we had Ms. Lazlo too, and very, very big congratulations to you as well.
Go Rockets.
Any other discussion on personnel? Or were you gonna say something, Ms. Vera?
You know, today's baby special day celebrating the teachers of the year. And maybe doesn't have nothing to, but you know, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Felix Plata because the kind of work that you're doing with the community. You are representing. You are representing the West Orange School District. And, you know, congratulations and keep working for the, as a word language supervisor, you know, that you are embracing them. Keep doing the kind of work that you're doing and congratulation again.
Thank you. Seeing no other discussion, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call on personnel?
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction items, B one through B five?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next may I have a motion to approve the finance items, C, special services items, A one through two, and business office items, B one through nine.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, would you please take the roll call?
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, may I have a motion to approve reports, item D one through D two?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ifker. Discussion? Hearing done, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Vera?
Yes.
Vice President Ifker?
Yes.
President Rock?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much to my board colleagues for that. Next up, we will have petitions and hearings of citizens for any agenda or non agenda item that you wish to discuss. You will have three minutes to speak. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Jason Lamont Jackson, senior, twenty five, Westview Road, here in West Orange. Teaching the Career and Tech Ed Department and also cross country indoor and outdoor track and field coach. I apologize for having been here in a while and normally attend as many board meetings as possible. And just the schedules kind of not prevented it and, or prevented it, preventing me from being here. And so seeing some new faces, welcome. I love being here in West Orange. It's, it's really important to me to, to coach, live and teach all in the same community. And this is my, going into my eighth year here. And just really proud to work here alongside, you know, a lot of these wonderful teachers that were honored today. I know there was some mention about not really knowing a lot about the programs. And I think here at the high school, we offer just so many amazing programs with the auto shop, with wood shop. Ms. Selly and, and architecture, you know, my, my department C T E, I'm teaching Intro to Supply Chain Management, one, two, and three. And a lot of people don't know about it, and we try to get the word out and talk a lot about it. And I think that there, if, if people really look, those that not necessarily complaining about their taxes, but look at the programs that are offered and where our students go and what they do. I think they would say that it's well worth it, especially what's coming here to the, to the district in terms of education, in terms of, you know, their, their taxes. And so would always be a strong advocate that the colleagues that I work with in this building, and I'm sure throughout the district are doing a phenomenal job, you know, taking care of these kids. And we want to make sure that they go off and do great things. So really excited about that. I did send the email out because I wasn't sure I was going to be able to make it. There was a little mishap on one of the attachments, and so I did print it out. But this is like I said, this is my eighth year here coaching track and field. And Coach Joe Soriano, who coached and taught for thirty plus years here in the district. We back in, I think, twenty twenty two, had our first memorial scholarship track meet. And then the track schedule got a little bit crazy. And last year, or two years ago, we did a cocktail dinner for adults where we could raise funds for scholarship dollars for student athletes, not necessarily just track and cross country, but any student athlete that is applying or accepted to a two and four year college or university. And so wanted to extend the invitation and save the date to the board members. The scholarship applications will be going out this week to all of the coaches and the guidance counselors, school counselors here. We've awarded two scholarships, male and female student athlete that apply in the past years. Our first two, Jennifer Alfa Rivera went to Rutgers, Alexander Roman Gabay went to, I mean, she went to University of Delaware. He went to Rutgers. And then Kylie Capstraw, who went to Yale, and Sebastian Di Simone, who was in the eighteen to twenty one program, phenomenal program. He's at Gwinnett Mercy as well. So I wanted to drop these off and then just closing out, just really talking about track and field. We've had a phenomenal season. Our, our program is growing, some phenomenal athletes. We just had our boys and girls, four by four relay qualify for the meter champs. We had three school records that were broken, Avon Noretic in the sixteen hundred, Rhea Randolph in the four hundred, and Corbin Rastin in the fifty five meter dash. And then Andreas Acosta also qualified in the eight hundred meters. So we're looking forward to representing West Orange this weekend at the meter champs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck to everybody that's running this weekend.
Thank you.
I also have some handouts. Would I be able to give them to you now through Ms. Flowers? Great. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Moore, our student liaisons, Ms. Flowers. My name is Kira Lowe, and I reside at twenty two Oak Ridge Road. And I'm here to talk to you about what our Hazel Advocacy Committee has been doing. So first, I want to thank you for your service to this district and say I appreciate having the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here as president of the Hazel App P T A and on behalf of the Hazel Advocacy Committee, which we officially formed on January fifteenth. And we took up a focus on providing immigration resources and support right away because of the policy changes, you know, meant to escalate immigration enforcement in this country. The committee has since branched out to other P T As, and we have many members of the committee here tonight in support. So far, our work has been on aggregating online resources and passing out printed materials such as red wallet cards to those who may encounter ICE officials. We now have a centralized website on Linktree for immigration resources that we've collected and organized into topics. And, you know, I think they can be helpful for the community at large and specifically to students and families and educators and our district as a whole. So as I researched many immigration resources, I came across the National Education Association Safe Zone Resolution and Model Policy. And that's what I gave to Ms. Flowers, and I did have a chance to email it to you all ahead of time. And so thank you again for letting me, you know, talk about it here tonight. So I want, you know, to ask the district to consider passing this resolution as a way to create a safe, safe school zone, which seems especially critical in light of the rescinding national policy that had protected places and, you know, sensitive spaces protected. This resolution is championed by the N E A and the N J E A as an important step that school districts can take to proactively protect students, support their social and emotional well being, and promote the educational environment as a whole. In addition, the National P T A statement supports the Safe Zone Resolution and encourages P T A advocacy around this policy. And so today, along with the co-chair, Eric Hammons, and Megan Melamed, and our contingent here, again, we are, you know, asking the district to consider passing this resolution here in West Orange. We feel that it would further strengthen the district's commitment to inclusive educational policy and provide all families, students and educators with additional support. And, you know, around this critical issue. By passing this resolution, it sets the stage for a longstanding policy and will serve the district, not just in this moment, but moving forward as well. So I believe we have the potential to grow as a district with this policy under our belts. I think it's a first step. I'm going to hand this off to Eric.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Superintendent Moore, members of the board, and our student liaisons here for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Hammons, Hazel parent and the co-chair of our recently formed Advocacy Committee. Can you see my address? Is that right? I'm at Carter Road. I wanted to start off by saying that I really greatly appreciate your work and dedication to the students of West Orange. As evidenced by tonight, everybody cares deeply about our students, and that, that's very clear. At a time when educating our youth has become wrought with a myriad of challenges, your important work has certainly not got easy, has not got, not gotten easier. And I know you care deeply about all students in this town and by extension, their families. It's these very challenges that I ask you today to support and implement the Safe Schools Resolution, which we sent to you earlier. I know, Mr. Moore, you acknowledged that over email. So I think here, being here today is to, in the spirit of partnership and to go on the record publicly that we, you know, seek to have this passed. It's very clear that the premise of who is welcome and who is not, and by extension, what role our, our schools play in society is being directly challenged. I believe, and I think you do too, that it is crucial that schools be a place where all students can learn and grow. However, too many in our community, however, too many in our community face uncertainty, fear of discrimination due to, due to their background or, or questions regarding their immigration status, gender identity, race, religion, or background. Again, I know your hearts are in the right place. I know it based on our communication that we've had. However, I come here to suggest that we follow that up with broader concrete action, such as this type of resolution. Families need to know and truly feel that they're being supported more proactively. Passage of such a resolution can do just that. It affirms that schools are safe and inclusive. The resolution commits our district to ensuring that every student, regardless of immigration status, gender identity, race, religion, or background, feels welcome, supported and safe in our schools. Furthermore, it gives teachers and staff clear guidance and tools. They need to support students in various situations, including reassurances for students, procedures for responding to law enforcement, and information and support for families and staff. Most importantly, it strengthens our community and a commitment to schools being safe zones, thus building trust between families in the district where, which is crucial to successful education. You have the power to show that West Orange is a district that stands by the strong principles of safe education for all. So please consider taking up this resolution. Also know that there are eager and willing parents who are here to help you in this challenging time. So let's please keep a dialogue open. I believe passing this resolution can be a great companion to the work we're doing through P T As that Kira indicated to provide information and resources, especially for our immigrant families. I'd be happy to meet, to discuss, and I'm sure we all would. But I do know, you know, we're already in communication on, on some of it. So appreciate the time and please look into this. Thank you. Um, I'd be happy to meet to discuss. I'm sure we all would. Um, but I do know, you know, we're already in communication on on some of it, so appreciate the time and please look into this. Thank you.
Well, members of the board, uh, my name is Josh Goldfarb. I live at ten Nance Road. Uh, I'm here. With uh with a lot of titles under my belt. I'm a resident, lifelong resident. I'm a teacher at Roosevelt Middle School and I'm the current president of the W O E A. Um, I'm bizarrely proud of being a product of West Orange. It is not just who I am, but it's a bit of a hobby. Um, I went to West Orange High School. I went to Roosevelt Middle School. I, for ten years, taught in a classroom in which I was once a student and I don't think many people can say that. I went to Gregory Elementary School and before that I spent my first two years in kindergarten and uh first grade in Fairmont Elementary School. I don't know if anybody here even remembers Fairmont. Um. My original purpose was to come up and echo the sentiments that were made today. Tonight emphasizes and highlights the exceptional staff and programs that we offer in West Orange and they all deserve not just the accolades that they have, but they deserve more than that. And I just want to point out that every one of them is very much deserving of every reward that they got today. Um, but they're not the only ones. Our buildings are filled with staff who are exceptional, who go above and beyond every single day. Who stay late to help kids, who come in early to help kids, who are giving food to kids who aren't getting it. They are doing more work than anybody realizes and they don't look for accolades. They don't do for awards, but they all deserve to be recognized. Um, the other thing that I want to mention is that um I I I do want to also encourage the board to accept the resolution and to adopt the resolution that was previously uh mentioned. Um, the day after the election, I'm a, I teach history class. The day after the election, um I open up my classroom just to them questions. You know, does anybody have any question about what's going on? Because it's history class. Um, and some of the questions were, most of them were pretty predictable. Uh, and in one of my classes, a student raises his hand and he said, am I going to get deported? And I, all I could respond was, I I hope not. What else could I possibly have said? And when I just said that, now I noticed the board perked up. And for us, it's jarring and for us, it's worrying. For them, it's their life. It is their real life. Um, Mr. Moore, we've already spoken um a- about what we can do to help our community and I know that the board very sincerely cares about that. Um, and I think everything that we could do to help our community, a part of the community that is often unseen. A part of the community is often afraid to speak up. We need to make sure that we protect those who are afraid to speak up for themselves. So, thank you very much.
Good evening, good evening. Um, I got choked up there. So uh, my name is Felix Plata. I'm the ESL World Language Supervisor. I am also um a proud member of this community as the West Orange Hispanic Foundation's president. And also a member of our uh, one of the coordinators for our our West Orange Way. Uh, and I say that proudly, the West Orange Way uh Committee. I'm coming here just to say thank you. Uh, I've had the opportunity to work with these parents here, these community members. Um, they are passionate. They are, they are more than empathetic. They have a strong desire. They are knowledgeable. Uh, they offer their expertise in their various professional fields. So I wanted to thank you for the work uh that you're doing. Um, and as someone who represents this population or part of this population that we're speaking of, I I thank you because I personally can use the help. Uh, so sincerely thank you. We have events planned. Um, we did uh plan an event and and other events. But the more people to do this work uh and to send out accurate information, uh, the better. So I thank you, um, Mr. Moore. I say thank you. I I know you know um for formally connecting me with these with these individuals. Uh, so the work, we are doing work to to support our community, to the board, all the work that we do with our multilingual learners. Um, who are not, and I want to be clear about this, are not all undocumented or illegal. Um, I want to be clear about that, even though many of them, and if they are here going through one form of the of the documentation process. Uh, for a citizenship or residency, uh, because there are many avenues by which individuals can earn their residency or citizenship. I was emotional there because they are still fearful because of the rhetoric that they hear. Um, they overhear things when people think they don't understand and as an individual who works closely with them, uh, they express these feelings and they've. They've gotten very emotional and they've, they're fearful. Um, and they are are hurt because they are here. And they've expressed, they are here to do with just about every other population that is in this country has done. They're here for a better future. They're here for their uh, the future of their children and they feel as though. They're being targeted unfairly many times. So I thank this community. Um, I'm proud to be part of this community for all the work that we do through the board and you've seen the the tutorial programs. Through the ESL Program and the World Language Program, where we had two educators recognized tonight, Mary Kiroz and Leanna Amarin for the work that they do. Beyond just the classrooms and also all the world languages, which specifically teach the appreciation of different perspectives and and individuals and backgrounds. And I know uh we have one of our fine students here who I I know personally, the Italian Program. Um, and when you go to our events, and I know many of you board, and I invite you to please come to our our cultural celebrations. The beauty of it, which I love so much about West Orange, is that it is not, if you go to the Italian night, it is not just Italian Americans there. If you go to the Lunar New Year celebration, it is people of all cultures celebrating, recognizing and appreciating each other. So um, I just want to say sincere thank you for all the work that everyone in this room does. And I look forward to future collaborations and and working with uh with everyone here. So thank you.
Hi, good evening. We were just talking about teachers staying late. Thank you for staying late and listening to this. This is a thankless job and so I really appreciate this. Um, my name is Katie Copel. I reside at thirty Colony Drive East and if the AV permits, I'd love to share a message from my student um in the district.
Um, easy one. What's your first name?
Charlotte.
And what do we normally call you?
Charlie.
Uh huh. What grade are you in?
Second.
And what town do we live in?
West Orange.
Yes, okay. So let's talk about school a bit. What do you like about school?
Um, I like that we get to learn and I, and when I usually have a day off, I'm sad because I don't have school and I don't get to see my friends. What I like about school is we learn and I have friends there.
That's great. Who are some of your favorite teachers and staff members?
Ms. Charlie, obviously, because she's my teacher and I feel like every teacher in the school building who I know and I probably will like every teacher in this school building that I've done at school.
That makes sense. Yeah, when you meet people, you feel comfortable, right? Yeah. And do your principal and teachers help you feel safe and important at school?
Yes.
How do they do that?
They respect us. They make sure we respect others. They make sure we all feel comfortable. If we don't feel comfortable at school, we go and talk to them privately. So, because that ma- because they might think that makes us a little more comfortable. Just them to know and then they can help us work through along with our guardians.
Oh, I love it. Okay, so these are some questions that might be a little bit trickier, but I think just say what you feel. That's right. Um, how would you feel if you saw people in uniforms with weapons outside of your school?
Very, very scared, sad and really scared. I might be saying that twice, but that's really what I feel.
Yeah. And how would you feel if one of them came into your classroom and asked to talk to a student?
Very scared, very extremely scared. I didn't know, I wouldn't know what was, what would happen to them. If something bad would happen to them and I would just be very, very sad. If they did, I would be very sad and not wanting them to.
Hmm. Yeah, are you getting upset?
Yes, but can keep going.
Okay. Um, so let's imagine that happened at school and then you had a reading group or you had a quiz right after. Do you think you could focus?
No.
Oh, why not?
Because I would be too worried for the friends and not knowing what's happening. And yeah, just be too worried, you know?
Yeah, I do. I want you to know that I am working with other parents and teachers and principals to make sure that you and all the kids at your school feel safe every day. So how would you feel if you knew that people in charge of West Orange schools made new rules and gave teachers special training to make sure that every student felt safe?
Incredible. Awesome. I would be so happy that they did. I would be overjoyed.
I'm so glad. Thanks for sharing your thoughts with me, sweetheart. I love hearing what you have to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Bye. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Charlie will be a tough act to follow. So, hi, everyone. Um, I echo all of the thanks that were given by the previous speakers and. Your availability here tonight and uh the beautiful ceremony that took place before this portion of the night. I have nothing written down. I wasn't going to speak, but I am moved to just make a couple of comments. My name is Megan Melamed. I reside at sixty-three Quimby Place. Um, in addition to being a mother of two West Orange students, I am also a social worker, working in New York City for the largest provider of family shelter in uh the United States. And I just am moved to speak because I think sometimes when we talk about these issues, they feel really outside of us and they don't. When we don't see them actually affecting us on the ground, it's very hard to uh connect with them. But it's here. And so what I'm seeing happening within the work that I do. Is if it is a predictor of what could happen to other communities within our country, things are looking really bad. And so I would encourage the Board of Ed to really take on this wonderful privilege of providing a safe space for every student within our incredible town. Um, if you imagine the level of trauma and fear that can live inside of a person, a child, with the fear of not knowing. If when they get home from school, their parent will be there. Um, it's, it's pretty mind-boggling. And so I feel it would be a privilege to create the safe place at each of our schools for our students to be able to land each and every day. Thank you.
So I've had the privilege of working with this team and I want to suck in and lift up everything and also support. I'm also going to speak on something really different right now, but I'm part of that and that's important. My name is Jessica Harold and I'm from Four Gavin Road. I come tonight as an educator with twenty years of experience in math and some of these classrooms. I'm going to form a principal, a district leader and a parent. While tonight's agenda includes so many opportunities to celebrate our teachers and celebrate our students, there are some critical areas that I'd like to address. A few weeks ago, my elementary age son shared his science assessment with me. What I saw was troubling. Thirteen multiple choice recall questions was the unit assignment nearly identical to the review sheet. There was no problem solving, no phenomena-based questions, no critical thinking and no three dimensions. This is not aligned with state standards. Before I proceed, I'm a champion of teachers. I love my kids' teachers. I know that they love my kids and they want what's best for them. Right now, the status quo in our district around science is unacceptable. However, and that's a system problem, we can do something about it. This led me to examine the schools and district's science assessment data and what I found was alarming for two reasons. One is our science proficiency is incredibly low. My school is less than fifty percent proficient, our district forty percent. But even more alarming is the racial differential. In our district, seventy-two percent of our fifth graders who are white. Were proficient in science while twenty-six percent of our students who are black. This is not about ability. This is about opportunity. And since this pattern has existed for years because I kept digging. And has existed in math and ELA because I kept digging. We need to acknowledge it and make some changes. First of all, science instruction must improve in general. While math and ELA curricula have been improved, we've made some great changes. Science has been left behind. Strong science is not only important on its own, but it also builds background knowledge that allows our students to be successful across the board. We're not providing or assessing students on grade level. That is not okay. We need to support our teachers in knowing what to do and how to do it. Science has changed. That's my life work right now and it's changed and we are not teaching the way we were all taught. We know better now. We need to provide ongoing and relevant professional development to support the people who love our kids. Second, we must address these racial and other subgroup disparities in achievement. Our kids can be sully, but not if they're not given that chance or taught or seen. These gaps don't close on their own and there are actual actions that we can do instead of just looking at the data and hoping that they'll get better. We can provide meaningful, ongoing training to help teachers recognize the bias. The research is clear that we can learn to be better. I had to do that. I grew up in a place where I thought we all bled red and we were all the same and I had to learn that we are not. We are unique and special and need to be seen in class. We can intentionally and actively create an atmosphere where all students are seen. And third, our teaching staff simply must reflect our students. We can actively recruit from HBCUs, multicultural organizations and teacher programs. We can build our own pipeline with programs in our high school to recruit students who we have now to say come back. And we can engage community members more actively. What kind of Black history are we writing here in West Orange? My kid wears a shirt that says I am Black History and he is, and I need him to be in a school that sees him. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Mr. Stevenson.
Um, so just wanted to say thank you for your comments around science. Uh, as you are aware and as you did acknowledge. We have implemented new curricula at the elementary school level for both ELA and math. And although bureaucracies do not move very quickly, those changes haven't occurred within the last four years. Uh, but curriculum in and of itself is insufficient to drive um. Improvements of student outcomes. It takes a collective, which you alluded to, and I think that uh this board is committed to that. Uh, one, by virtue of those curricular changes, but also by virtue of uh our public stance. When the last NJLSA results were released, there was a emphasis from a policy standpoint, and I'm speaking as the policy chair. Uh, from a policy standpoint, looking at how we can uh improve, but also. We had a laser focus on middle school math, but notwithstanding that, that did not exclude science for which you uh correctly indicate. Our assessment data and the performance in science by any measure, reasonable measures, unacceptable. And I think that while I appreciate your comment about being able to have teachers that reflect our community, the diversity of of it. And that obviously is important. I say that as a, as a person who believes in diversity and believes that the community should reflect the students in front of it. Uh, there also has to be that commitment in the in the existing corpus of educators to embrace uh new curricula, to embrace professional development, to embrace. Uh, going beyond whatever uh unspoken or spoken parameters exist with respect to what we can achieve for students. And I'm linking that to the comment made earlier about the young man who got the outstanding perfect score on the SAT. Uh, because I think his words spoke volumes more than any of us could speak, more than what I'm speaking right now, about a belief about what children can achieve. And so I think uh I take your your words to heart around science and around every aspect of uh curriculum instruction. And about how we as a diverse community should just not reflect that in 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 numbers. When I say numbers, to say that our community is diverse in many ways, but our, we have to also reflect that diversity in our achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Uh, thank you all for coming out to speak tonight um to the Advocacy Committee that that shared your concerns. We hear you. Thank you all for coming out to speak tonight to the Advocacy Committee that shared your concerns. We hear you. Mr. Moore did share the model policy with us. We have referred that to our board attorney for some official legal counsel. And our policy committee has been looking at our existing policies to see if we need to update anything in light of what's in here. But what I can say is that West Orange is and always has been a safe place for all of our students. We are committed to educating every student that lives in West Orange, no matter who they are. And that's, you know, been true throughout Mr. Moore's leadership and will continue to be true as long as, as we are up here. Looking kind of briefly through the policy, it looks like just about everything in here is something that's already either part of our policies or part of the procedures that Mr. Moore outlined before our January meeting. So we already have policies about FERPA that prevent us from disclosing any kind of student information without a subpoena. We do not collect any kind of student information about students' immigration status, so we could not disclose that even if we were subpoenaed for that. You do not have to worry about armed people walking through the halls. They are not allowed to do that. As outlined in this policy, anybody that is coming to the school to, to speak to someone would go to the office. The procedures Mr. Moore put in place is that they would have to show some kind of warrant, which will be evaluated by him, the West Orange Police and our Board Counsel before any action is taken. And no one will be wandering the halls under any circumstances. So again, our, our schools are a safe place to the extent that we as the Board of Education can make them safe. But we will again, review these policies and see if there's anything in our existing policies that need to be updated. But we thank you for, for coming out tonight for advocacy. Any other comments from the board before we close? All right. Can I have a mo- or? Thank you very much to everyone. Our next board meeting for the purposes of reorganize. Now, you just didn't edit this again to screw with me? It is not for reorganization. Our next board meeting will be held at five thirty PM on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. For this meeting will be held in the West Orange High School Library and Media Center. We will not be going into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Givker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you for joining us tonight. Our meeting is now adjourned. We wish you a good night.